Special session meeting this evening. Hearing none. Special session, hearing wanted for additional appropriations to spend funds from the debt service. Mr. Wrong.
A year ago when you got your 1782 notice, there was a note at the bottom that said that the debt for the debt service fund was adopted 248,868 dollars short of need. And the amount was allowed on line 11 in the detail. And it would be necessary to do an additional appropriation. So in order to be able to spend those funds and pay our debt service, it's necessary for us to ask for that additional appropriation. So the resolution simply says that it's been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget. Therefore, it's ordained, resolved by the Board of School Trustees of Delphi Community School Corporation, Delphi Carroll County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing units, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the state. And that would be debt service, 248,868 dollars. And I'm asking you to approve that amount that we can go ahead and appropriate. It does not raise taxes. It simply allows us to spend the money that's already in the budget.
Mr. President, I move to adopt additional appropriations for the sum of 248,868 dollars out of debt service as stated in the resolution.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor for the resolution that was read for 248,868 dollars. Discussion, please. The decision. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Do you want to pass this around now or?
Hey, looking for a motion to adjourn the special session? Make a motion to adjourn the special session? Give me a motion, a second, to adjourn the special session. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? Session is closed. Okay, open a regular meeting. Any visitors in the public realm out there which is to comment on any item on the regular meeting? Hearing none. Approve all minutes. We have the minutes from the October 7th, 2019 work session and the November 1st minutes of the 2019 special session. Looking for a motion to adopt those.
Motion to approve the minutes presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the minutes as stated. Comments or discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Buses. Number one, under P, the electric bus. The time has come to make a decision, I believe, on our electric bus. Richard, Mr. Wrong, do you have anything you need to add to that?
The... I think you, did you get this copy in your packet from Ross? Yes. So we have looked at two different models of buses. We've looked at the Thomas and the Bluebird. There's a $15,000 price difference between the two. And the VW grant will provide $315,000 toward the purchase of that bus. So you can see the Thomas would be $90,000, which is about $3,000 or $4,000 less than what a diesel bus would cost. And the Bluebird would be about $12,000 more. There at some point, and I don't think you need to make any kind of a decision about a charging station, but you will have to have a charging station. It is a DC charging station, which makes it more expensive than what we had originally anticipated it was going to be. So it charges faster and the minimum price would be about 16 and the bigger unit 42. So that if you do decide to go ahead with purchasing the electric bus, that's something I think you can in fact wait till summer to make any kind of a decision. And Duke is not going to be able to promise anything. They are asking the State Utility Commission to be able to provide incentive monies and they're expecting an answer by June of 2020. Ross, I thought was going to be here, but he says he actually prefers the Thomas bus to the Bluebird bus. At least on this model, the batteries are up inside the frame of the bus, not down below, which he thought was a good feature.
They are?
They changed.
I think they changed.
Well, I thought it was going to change on the next model.
No, on this model.
On this model, I apologize.
Yeah, but they'll be encased in steel or aluminum, military aluminum, I guess.
Okay, we're looking for a motion for the electric bus.
I move to purchase the Thomas C2 electric bus based off the receiving the VW grant money. So which, I can't get a look at this right now.
315.
315, thank you.
Have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the Thomas electric bus. One more discussion? When are we going to be receiving them?
Probably not until December of 2020.
And when are we beginning the incentive monies from VW?
Supposed to be, I think, June timeframe in mid-summer. So we should have that money before we have to pay for the bus. So and if we decide Duke gets there, that would be maybe forced to do nothing. At this point, anticipate a cost of a bus is what it will be, particularly if we're purchasing one anyway. I guess I'll just go kind of on the record that originally I didn't know for sure on it, but after attending a couple of meetings and then the meeting we had in here the other day, a lot of the concerns, the, with the batteries and all that, the steel or aluminum steel casings that they're all encased in to make it really safe. I feel comfortable in all those concerns from the public of being addressed of what means I've been there so far.
What cycle? Do you have any idea how long they last?
Batteries, I'd say eight to 12. But, you know, when I'm looking at it, probably an eight-year cycle.
Bus body, obviously, is going to be what we've been experiencing.
Look at a normal bus launch stand.
Well, I don't know if there is a normal one, but look at that list.
12.
Well, we're on the 12-year rotation, so.
Is the pink a special certified mechanic or is it a normal mechanic?
So they have, I know you guys want to hear, so everyone's good. They have five to seven maintenance people across the Indiana on route around. I think the closest one they say would be maybe an hour out. And so they will, as part of the warranty and everything, that our mechanic or whoever is working with buses will not have to be touching them like that, so.
And I believe there was a training for whoever's in the bus.
Yeah, I think that's to do mainly minor stuff. And of course, then the tires and other stuff is just the same as a regular bus, so.
Yeah, the train goes a little farther than that. Fire department, the police, I mean, that's all encompassing that. They want to make sure that everybody's, you know, understands it too, so.
I think one of the interesting facts of their presentation was when they discussed how much it costs to operate a diesel bus per mile versus what it costs to operate an electric bus per mile. There's a considerable amount of difference between the operation of a diesel bus per mile and 86 cents to 26 cents. Over 60 cents a mile difference in maintenance and upkeep costs. And there's no emissions.
Yeah, with our solar project and we overproduce about somewhere between 40,000 and 60,000 a year, that's not going to cost us anything. I mean, if we were just barely using everything 100%, but we're overproducing, so I think that's got to be considered in there a little bit that way. So, you know, I look at this way that it's a, it's an opportunity. There's only four, is that right, across Indiana that's going to be used. But if a year or two or three down the line, there's nothing restricting us from having to be able to get rid of it. And when you look at the value of that, it'd be at $400,000, you know, in a year or two if it's so big. But I'll just about bet that the companies want to make this work, so we're not going to be out here hung dry, I think, on anything that way. So when it comes to service and stuff, so I don't feel bad doing it, but I think that, like I said, after we've been through and then the glass meeting, I feel pretty confident in saying that I think it's worth our while to look at, especially since we've got one bus to replace or so.
What's the range that they talked about at the last meeting?
Eighty. That's a short, that's a short range. They're saying 80 to 130. Eighty to 130.
And as it gets cold, that's why we're here, just saying 80.
And we've got one route that's two miles.
Two miles. In town, so it never has to leave.
The DC charging station, will it be hooked into our corner?
Yes, it will often be. So down at the armory, it'll be hooked in. I think you guys maybe went down there and maybe had a little bit.
He said for the first bus, it may not be hooked directly into the grid. But if we would add more electric buses later, that.
But we need to use some more solar.
Yeah, I think that what their contention was is that to go sort of the road to be able to tie in and bring it back and everything. So I think the first go-around did suggest we not tie directly into the grid.
But the main part of the electrical cost is already, the three phase is already there. And that.
Yeah, this is three phases, not single phases.
And that's part of the major cost I think right there. Any other questions? The session. Mr. Smith and Mr. Trubugger.
Mr. Smith is coming.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the electric bus, through Thomas Electric, those Thomas buses. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion passes. B2, selling of yellow buses, number six and number 20. Mr. Wrong?
We, we might as well be rid of them in terms of, rather than keeping them on our insurance and having, simply having them sit around. I don't know what, I don't know if the estimated value is going to be around $1,500 or what it is, but I think that may not be unusual for that. So we, I would ask you to grant permission to go ahead and sell those.
All right, looking for a motion to sell buses six and 20.
Yes, I'll make a motion to sell two buses, not necessarily tied to six and 20, that away in case they're one of the other buses for some reason they have to look. But I am in favor of selling two yellow buses, full-size buses.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to sell two of the yellow buses. Discussion? And how many does that leave us in reserve still leaves us? Three or four?
I thought three.
For those funds, I really don't know what I could do.
Should go back into transportation.
Anything else? Well, I don't know if this is really stated, the right way to state it or not, but I think something that the public needs to know is that as far as us purchasing the electric bus, we were going to purchase a bus anyway and possibly up to three buses. So I really don't want this to be made an issue about just an electric bus because we are purchasing a bus anyway. And it could have been up to three buses, so I don't want to get hammered on the fact that it's just an electric bus. I want people to realize that we are, we were going to purchase buses anyway, so.
Yeah, worst-case scenario, this bus has been cost us one bus.
So I just want to kind of clear that up. Do you think you'll shop tomorrow or anything? Any other discussion on the selling of the buses? Hey, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. C, bond rating report. Mr. Wrong.
Well, it's a rather long report. It's about four pages, so. I'm not going to read it. I am not going to read it to you.
Mr. Wrong, can we just pause for just a second, just to go walk in so he can hear?
Sure.
Our Mr. Smith, Mr. Gill. Now you go straight across.
I was.
He's got video quality going on.
I was contacted by Standard and Poor's about, and they said that we were under a credit watch and they, they had several pages of questions they wanted to, for us to try to provide answers to. And so we tried to do that to the best of our ability and then they took that information. They go to a committee and make a decision about what's going to happen to the bond. So we went from an A minus to a BB plus and, and like I say, there's a lot of information behind it. We'll make that, we'll make that report available on the website. I've already shared it with the comment, so they have that. But they had some, they had some very big concerns about a lack of effective internal controls. One of their fears that I think all of us have had, or at least I have had since I arrived, is whether or not there's an imbalance between the spending of the, you know, especially in education and operations versus the amount of revenue that we're taking in. And we are hoping it's not a structural imbalance in the fact that it's built in, that we know we're going to have to make changes. Cash reserves have continued to decline over the last three years and they're going to be very low at the end of this year. And I think the ideal, Kurt, you can correct me, is 10 to 12% or whatever. And, and so ours are not, are not going to be close to that. They, they were originally concerned about the emergency loan and the leadership change, and so that's why they reached out to us. And, and so we discussed those kind of things. So there, there are a lot of things that have happened, are going on, and that is a result, as a result, we've done that. I will tell you that we're taking steps to enact financial controls that we did not have before and, and that's using POs for all possible purchases. We are now signing, dual-signing checks. We're, we're going to take some of the duties away from the treasurer in the fact that the treasurer writes checks, balance, in the past has balanced the accounts and then takes deposits to the bank. And the insurance company for one advised that it would be good to break up those duties. So we are, we are changing some of those duties and thus the dual signing of the checks. And I believe that now Samantha is going to be in charge of taking the deposits. So we're working on reducing our bus maintenance contract. We're working on utilizing all the grant funds that are available to us that we have. You obviously did things with energy savings, which I hope will certainly pay off later on tonight. We'll talk about preschool, which has been a major, major funding issue. We're trying to do the Medicaid funding and, and again, I'm going to call on all, all interested people to help us with cost savings. So that's where we are. I don't, I don't know if you want to ask Kurt to talk about what the change in the bond rating and.
And it's really, it doesn't really impact the school corporation on your current outstanding bonds. The issue is that the double B plus is still an investment grade. Probably where you were at, the A minus and the A rating is probably pretty standard across the state for the majority of school corporations. So the only thing will be impacted is if you get a plan in place to build up your cash reserves, start growing those, balancing that and growing those reserves up to a level that Standard and Poor's would consider a standard level for school corporations across the state. The only thing it'll impact when you get ready to issue the next series of bonds, what that, getting the rate back up to an A minus or an A will reflect, should yield lower interest costs. So having the double B plus, it basically potentially could impact the interest rate that the corporation receives.
Do you have any idea what that impact would be on interest?
You know, and it fluctuates. It could be, it could be, when I'm talking about 20 basis points, it's, it's probably a quarter, what we're talking about is probably a quarter of a percent.
And how, when will they review the rating again typically?
Well, they'll probably come back, I would say, in a year and take a look at the progress of where the corporation is at, what your current balances are and what you're projecting out probably a year or two where your budget is at. And I think the corporation right now, you basically, the bonds are outstanding. You start paying those off, so there is going to be a decrease in your outstanding debt service payments as you move forward.
The quickest thing to change our rating, we're looking at year from now, is to build our cash reserves? That's, that's the best way, right?
Correct, yes. And that's really getting, as Mr. Wrong had mentioned, getting a, getting a handle on where you're at expenditure-wise versus revenue. And you know where you're going to end up basically at the end of each year as you move forward.
I also talked to Eric Wong tonight, and one of the suggestions that he had prepared from Ice Miller and from the last bond was you probably would have taken, if you took out a tax anticipation warrant, we may not have been here at all this year. But fair to say, Kurt, I mean, those are common, we didn't have the time to do it. Eric suggested maybe passing that next year as a resolution. You may not have to act on it, but at least it gives you that cushion so that you don't end up in the same spot next year.
Yeah, I think we've talked about that is having that issuing, when you pay off this loan at the end of the year, turning around and issuing another tax anticipation though, either going through the open market or going through the bond bank. The bond bank has a pool program and a lot of school corporations issue those because it's mainly a timing issue with property tax distributions. It just evens the cash flow out and then you pay that off at the end of the year, each year. Any other question left? Mr. Ledger, into your work session.
Okay, real quick on, since we're cross duties, doing some different duties, does anybody additionally, like Samantha, need to be bonded, does the board need to bond them additionally?
Dana has bonded along with Andrea.
Right, do we need Sam going in and delivering?
I think, and I think we've already taken a look at that.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's not, it's not very. No, it protects her and protects the corporation.
Any other questions on the bond rating report?
With the cash reserve, does that include the rainy day fund or is that the rainy day fund?
Yeah, it mainly, it mainly includes the rainy day and the, your education, education fund. But I think Standard and Poor's is probably looking at the operations fund. It includes all of your funds that you have included in the operations, your bus replacement, capital projects and transportation. It's really looking at your, at your operations and seeing what you reserve, how much money you have on hand to really pay expenditures, whether it's two months, three months, that you have that on hand.
I read, I read there's some, it's not all doom and gloom in here, there's some positive things in the report.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
And then I also read that they will, the credit watch will be reevaluated in nine days.
They'll probably take a, take a shorter look, but they'll probably take a look at it more in-depth in a year. But it isn't, no, it isn't all doom and gloom. It's, it's something that I think from a standpoint, there's a lot of positives, your, your enrollment. I think they noted that there's been a little decrease, little decline, but it's not significant. That's the other item, really a driver that they look at when they're evaluating school corporations across the state because with enrollment, that drives your, the money you're receiving. So they're all anticipating, looking at that, how that's trending also, along with your cash reserves.
And the low debt burden.
Yes, and yours is very low. And they usually look at, they usually look at 3% or below of your net assessed value, your outstanding debt payments, your debt load, your debt ratio and your, your rate flow. Yeah.
We did get our advance drawn today, so we do have part of the, I've said this too many times. Hopefully, we did not balance our accounts for some months during, before, actually before summer. And Leslie is going back and is balancing those. July seems to be a real problem. And, and at some point, even as much as maybe just a day, she may just have to say, we can't do it and make notes for the state board accounts and, and move on because obviously we want to look at September because that gives us three quarters of the year and then even October, which these should come fairly quickly because of, of the fact that we've done the things we needed to do to, to have the data to, to be able to balance. So, and obviously November's going to be a little bit easier. So, so we want to, we want to get those things in order. But, but once, once we can, once we can do that posting, then we're going to have a very good idea. But I have, I tried to estimate and we do have enough money to, uh, to pay our, our debts in January and, and, uh, and then the other issue with the emergency will, will still be here in a while.
Wait, oh, do you anticipate submitting that information by December or May?
I hope so. Most certainly. You deserve it.
Anything else? Hey, all in favor, a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
Sub moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Hey, we have a motion, second, to adjourn the regular meeting. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Those? Regular meeting is adjourned. A work session to order. U S Bank, Mr. Wrong.
Um, I, I put a, I put a hand out there for you. We, we have been billed for our final payment from Performance Services. It's just over ninety-one thousand dollars and, uh, I am not, I'm not going to ask you to pay that until we get those, all those, uh, projects done. And I don't know, Mr. Scheidler, if, if you have had a chance to walk through any of that or if you have a.
Two-page punch list, the two-page punch list? No, not, not like, no.
Okay. I, I was told today by Performance Services that I think that Harris Glass is, they're kind of considering them done and it, but they still think there needs to be some work done down there and they're probably going to hire another company to come in and do some finish work on those, on those glass frames. And, and that they feel like would be, uh, would be done at a higher level than what is currently there. That, that would be at their expense. So they're, uh, not, it would not cost us additional funds. But you can see that we have, uh, six hundred and sixty-six, I hope that's not all of this, six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars roughly left in the, in the bond, if you ask that. Samantha and I have been trying to look at their bank statements and reconcile those also. We, we, we can't understand why some of these bills were not paid. The updates were, were sent in and, and, uh, and so, and in some cases, we didn't hear from the companies. So we're trying, we're still trying to make sure that we have everything accounted for. But so this would be a low estimate. It could possibly be a little bit more money than that in there.
Any questions on the comments on the bond number?
What do we have remarks for the agreement, uh, other than that? Power line?
That power line is the, is the only item that I'm ordering right now. And they have been working on it. I don't know. Fourteen five.
And we have until the summer of twenty, twenty-one on this?
I think so.
So probably the discussion at some point will be how we move ahead with the rest of this. Hey. Item B, Mr. Fletcher, you have the floor, sir.
All right. And I guess.
Thank you.
I guess in part of our discussions with taking a look at, uh, operations and looking at your cash reserves moving forward, wanted to prepare some information and I guess some illustration on some options that the corporation may want to consider. And these are just illustrations. And the information we put together, um, we're really looking at, uh, the first option is currently the, the solar, the solar loan or the debt on solar project. You're currently paying that out of your operations fund. A lot of school corporations across the state started out that way also, but they've migrated that solar debt over to the debt service fund. And by doing that, that would give the corporation some flexibility moving forward that you could either pay the, uh, that loan payment, which right now is approximately is a little shy of three hundred thousand, that would free up some capacity in your operations fund. Now that money could be used for, uh, expenditures out of the operations fund or the capacity could be saved and could be declared a surplus and transferred over to the rainy day fund. And that builds your cash reserves moving forward. So that's one option and I'll go through the illustration, what that would look like with your debt service. The second option is, uh, currently the school corporation has, uh, general obligation bonding capacity. The corporation could issue a general obligation bond next year. And you would not issue that as tax-exempt debt. You could issue that as taxable, a taxable bond. And what a taxable bond does, it gives you the ability to look back through different prior budget years that if the corporation has expended money for capital projects and capital projects is not operations, it's a roof, it's paving, it's improvements on your buildings, it's, it's even buses that the corporation have, has purchased. And you could go back and itemize those items and actually issue that bond and reimburse the school corporation for those. And that, what that does, that's an infusion, another infusion of, of revenue cash that the corporation could have to build your cash reserves. So we'll go through those first two and then we'll get into taking a look at some detail on your, on your cash reserves, where you're currently at and a little history on those. So if you go to the first two pages, this just gives a snapshot of your current outstanding debt. If you're looking at page two, the graph, you can see that the corporation with the bonds that were just issued, uh, this year, basically you're maintaining your, your current debt service payments at about a million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. And you can see that those payments drop off in twenty twenty-one. So that gives you some flexibility to add some debt and really maintain your tax rate. Now that depends on your net assessed value, but you have some flexibility to maintain your payments without raising them. So if you go back to page four, this is a combined graph with your existing debt. And then in the pink bars that begin in twenty twenty-one, that's your solar payments. So basically you could move the solar payments over to debt service. And basically you're still below your current level in twenty twenty or where you've been for the last several budget years. And that leaves capacity that if you go to the second illustration, you could issue some GO bonds moving forward. And what this does with the solar, and I want to make sure that you understand, you wouldn't have to, let's say that your financial position recovers. Basically you have the flexibility to still pay that out of operations or you could split it in a budget year, pay part of it out of debt service, pay part out of, out of your operations. That could be a, a decision that could be made each budget year as you move forward, but you'd have that flexibility. And I'm going to stop and see if anybody has any questions.
Since moving solar next year, twenty twenty-one?
For twenty twenty-one.
Leaving it in operations for all of them?
Twenty, yes. And the reason, the reason not moving that, if you moved it in twenty twenty, that would have increased your, your tax rate. And then, go ahead.
If, if we, um, make partial payments out of operations, once that's due to debt services, uh, do those payments go on the back end to principal or how does that work?
No, it's paid on the current, paid on the current payment that's due in that budget year.
Okay.
Remember on that, uh, solar project, uh, there's, can't prepay unless you pay it all, because it's either all or none, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and it's, it's got a, it's got a call premium on it.
Two percent or something like that on top of it.
And we'll look at that as you move forward, if there's, if there's an option to refinance that, as you pay down some of that principal, that may be something that depending on the interest rates, that it may make economic sense to go ahead and refinance that. Then on the next page, you can see this is just a schedule of all your obligations. And then the far right-hand column is your total payments. And the next to the last right-hand column is the energy savings. And you can see the detail on those payments. They actually increase as you get out, uh, the last six, seven years, you can see the payments increasing. Then if you go to the next graph on page six, this combines your outstanding debt service with the solar project. And then in the blue or black, this, we just put together a two million dollar general obligation bond, wouldn't have to go that high. But basically it's maintaining your payments in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two at that same level that you're currently at, that million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand per year. So basically you're not asking for more money in your budget moving forward. And this could be combined, you could issue this, um, we extended that out about nine years. We could shorten that up depending on what your future capital needs are as you move forward. So if there's something that, let's say you didn't have any need through twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, we would shorten that up, the payment. So that kind of dovetails with your future long-term capital planning, the needs that the corporation has.
In this scenario, the two million would be nothing but to, um, give us the cash reserves we need to operate. We're not talking about necessarily borrowing for a construction. But, or we can.
You could split.
Depending on what we need at that point.
Yes, yes.
But the whole main purpose is to shore up our, our reserves and our ability to move forward with, which would help out in the SOP and everything.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and did you anticipate in this model being, this being one hundred percent taxable or a combination?
Well, that's, it could be, we could.